I'm going to call to order a regular budget meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at five thirty. I will note that Mike McCoo is joining us via Zoom and Jim and I are here in the room. So the next item is present to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Anyone online? You can unmute yourself or one person around. That's so much. Okay. I'll move on to budget workshop. So we, I hope was that we would have a pretty complete budget so we could begin discussions in earnest this evening. That is not the case. So we will not have our full budget until Monday, the twenty-third, at which point we can begin to have discussions on the budget as a whole. I was speaking earlier about the challenges of the timing of the all of the budget work that needs to be done in conjunction with our business office as well as the Board of Ed in the same boat and ending the year with auditing work and reporting that needs to be done. So because of that, I'm going to suggest that we start talking about the largest portion of the Selectmen's budget, which is Public Works, and really narrow down our conversation to road maintenance. So in light of the presentation we had last week from Beta on the pavement management software and some of the information they gave us on their their estimates on what we should be putting into our roads in order to maintain a level rating. What should we, what we should put in to increase our rating, which increases the effectiveness of our roads? Or if we put in less than that, how we can see a decline in our roads? So, Mike, I don't know. I don't think you have in front of you because we printed them out. A snapshot of Troy's budget, but included in that on the third page. On page three is the dollar amounts and hold on to your hats, folks, that that Troy is asking for for roads. And most of this has been developed using this data along with some of the concerns Troy has had over his four-year tender here. He has asked repeatedly over the last several years for double what we have been budgeting on roads on average around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We spend anywhere between two hundred and sixty and, you know, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars on roads. And Troy has repeatedly said, in order to make progress, we need to increase these budgets. We've made some cuts. Each year, COVID made us really want to make some additional requests, but the unknowns in where we were from an economic standpoint made us dial back then, and here we are. So what you'll see is Troy asking for a million dollars for road maintenance instead of our average two hundred, we'll call it ninety thousand dollars. And in that, Troy's asking for a hundred and fifty thousand in chip seal, which is what we have been spending. Forty-five thousand in crack seal, which is what we have been spending in an asphalt, eight hundred and five thousand dollars.
Just, you know, Erica, Kelsey did email it to me now while we were talking, so I am looking at it on my phone.
Perfect. So, and with that, did he get the list? No. Okay. So I'm going to let Troy kind of share with, share with us his draft of roads for this year. If you recall, Beta, one of the additional things they're going to work on is drafting a CIP plan so that we can look at, but that has not been completed. So right now Troy's focusing on what he believes needs to be done first. And that's what we're going to see in this first year plan. And I think it's important to say all of this is subject to funding and that it's a draft.
It did have one, somebody asked me, what is this road thing? This is a database. It's all for what's going on. I just want to mention that we actually hired a service. We had somebody come, an engineering service. This is what they do. It just so happens it comes with a database, so you can proceed methodically analyzing and evaluating roads. And they also have, they said they would help us with grants and stuff like that or give us technical advice since they are paving companies.
Well, they're not, they're not a paving company. They don't.
They're not a paving project manager.
Exactly. So they don't know a paving company like a box.
No, but when people say like engineering wise is what you need to do, you know, this kind of road, leave alone this type, you know.
I think it's important to say the database isn't for us to analyze. We paid them to do that work and they are providing us with that data. So it's not as though they're giving us a list of roads so that we can analyze them. It's another tool for us. But they, we just paid them to actually do some of that analysis.
So they did that analysis and I think they did a great job. The next step is just put our brain power behind it because, you know, we all know that Mickelick Road.
Right, exactly.
Because a lot of people live on Mickelick Road, you know.
But that's where you have to prioritize.
Prioritize by volume.
Yeah, yes and no, Jim. And so, Mike, please sign in when you can. We can't continue to say because not a lot of people travel on that road that we shouldn't fix that road or it goes to the bottom of the list. That's traditionally what happens. But I think it's important to note that residents who pay the same percentage of taxes in this town live on those roads and drive on those roads. So we still have a responsibility to maintain all of them. Everything can't get done at the same time, so we do have to prioritize.
And that's why we're.
But, but I don't, I don't want to see us only prioritized by the heaviest volume traffic because a Mickelick Road, it's not getting traffic through Wellington, but it is getting traffic through from another community. And we are responsible for that. And we see what happens when we neglect on Moose Meadow Road. And so just put into perspective how we choose that, from my perspective, it is not based solely on volume of traffic on the road because if we let all of those lesser traveled roads go, we're going to find ourselves in a, we have no choice but to fix them now. And coming up with larger funds is going to be challenging. So Troy, I'll let Troy talk about.
I didn't mean to imply that we're just a good goal.
Yeah.
You, we have limited funds or resources.
Could I just, could I just squeeze in a quick comment on that? I, I think that the, I think the key to the, one of the keys to prioritizing those roads is that at least we know the roads with low traffic will age a little slower. Not, not that we care less about the people who live on them, but at least we know the degradation happens a little slower where you have less traffic. So that might be, you know, probably something that Troy and every other Public Works Director has already been using in their thought process that roads would like traffic get beat up slower. And that's probably our only, that's probably our only saving grace, if you will, on how we, you know, how we look at that.
Great. All right. Troy?
So to pave and reclaim. So reclaim is to grind up the road like what they did on Moose Meadow. So my first priority would be holster road. That from where the new truck stop is down to the bridge would be all ground up and reclaimed. Colar Road, you know, it's not a really traveled road, but it is a cut through. We've had, I've got some prices before, a couple of years back. So that would be my second one. Moose Meadow is, we fix a portion of it. If we can fix a portion each year or something, then that road, that road is about four point three miles, I believe. And so if we can add on to do another mile, it was a newer section done twenty years ago or whatever it was.
Thirty at least.
Very. So that section can be maybe just an overlay instead of a reclaim in the future. Pine Crest off of Village Hill, that is a dead end road, but that road has, it's got its fair share of problems. We ended up fixing a little piece last year just to hold the end of the road together. Catch this road. Um, Kuchko, the dirt piece. We did the drainage there this year. I know it's a dirt road. I know we have to maintain our paved roads, but I think that short little stretch would make a big difference. It does wash out quite a bit. It does get quite a bit of traffic on that road. And I think to pave that portion of there, I think would be beneficial to the town, just as a maintenance area. Clint Eldridge is the same thing. There's about eight hundred feet of dirt there. We grade it. They tear it up every time we try to do it. It's a small little piece that I think is worth it. And Mason Road on, off of Daleville School, we had some serious washouts last year with it. And just we paved up about a thousand feet to where the last driveway is. There's already drainage there. And then we paved on the other side. So it's not quite a thousand feet past where the drain was fixed. That's what I would do for paving and reclaiming those pieces of road.
Thousand feet in.
Roughly a thousand feet. It's not.
From the Parker side.
From the Parker side, yeah.
And then the other direction.
And the other direction, to the house. Yeah, basically to that first driveway that's there, coming down the hill, both drainages. There's drainage there already. It just, it's kind of crazy to have catch bases on a dirt road that. So. Does anybody have any questions with that little piece?
So now I think Troy, if I can note from the data we've gotten, and you should all be getting a new, you will be getting, we've reached out to you today. You'll get a new report that has, no, it, no, this is, this was their presentation to us. This will be, when you heard them talking about segments of road and Troy and I talked about how we'd seen a draft report, this was the draft report. And so we'll be getting a copy of that. I was hoping we'd have them so I could share them with you. As soon as we get them, we'll share them with you. Holster Road, Colar Road and Pine Crest are all roads that Troy has had concerns about for several years. And they were identified in this report as needing major rehab. And the section of Moose Meadow Road that he's talking about is considered minor rehab. So they were things that were all identified, then Kuchko, Clint Eldridge and Mason, they're dirt roads. They weren't analyzed as part of this project. So.
Anybody else? On the overlay portion, if it was broken down, Fisher Hill Road would be overlaid. We'd do like an inch and a half or two inch overlay over that whole tire road. Coming up by thirty-two there, we wouldn't change any of that because if we were to change it, it has to be at a ninety degree angle. So that'd be a huge project. So this would just be paving Fisher Hill. Depot Road, Loshi Road and Penny Hill. Penny Hill would actually be like a mill and fill where they'd come in and mill it down two inches and put two inches of fresh asphalt over the top.
Is that the entire length of Penny Hill?
Yep, the whole tire piece.
Okay, so that's a big chunk.
And the intersection, right there with that four-way intersection is that's cool next in there. And if you've driven that lately, it's pretty wonky and that needs to be done in, well, a hump of asphalt over the top.
So overlay always a mill and then?
No, sometimes it's just like they'll shim it to level it, you know, put a level of course, then they'll put like an inch and a half or two inches over, whatever you want to do it. But Penny Hill would be, would be a milling fill more than that, where they would come in and mill it down and go over.
But the first three are just an overlay.
Just an overlay, a shim and overlay, just a leveling course and then they would come through. So then scratch it first, put the crown back into the road and then they would come back and you'd have to put an inch and a half or two inches over the top.
Hey Troy. Yeah, just a quick question on Penny Hill. Do you happen to know, and I realize I should know this trivia, but do you happen to know why it's so wide at the curve near Latham?
I do not, Mike. I think that's just how they did. I have no clue on that one.
The only reason I ask is if, if there's no good reason for it, it's like twice as wide at the widest point as the rest of the road. Maybe we don't need to maintain that entire width or maybe we don't need to repave that entire width.
Wonder if it's sightline related.
It could be a sightline issue there. I can check with Carl on that to see, maybe he would know why they just did it that, that big.
Yeah, maybe even Lou remembers why it was done that way. It's very odd.
Yeah, it is odd, but that's, maybe they just had some extra asphalt.
That's what I was thinking. It's the old days.
Yeah. Throw it up, you know. Um, Chip Seal, I would like to do Navartil. The village is down in the village where Halls Pond is, those little sets of sections of roads. Clint Eldridge would be chipped the following year after what if we did pave that piece. So then the whole road would be chipped over it. Lustig Road, Sea Car, Miller Farms, Sharp's Mill and then Laurel Drive. I had a question mark with Laurel Drive is because I know the foundations there have been, I believe, almost everybody's house has been lifted in there besides one or two, I believe. And that one, there's a lot of concerns with the catch basins going in there. So that's just not a, if this wasn't a project, then I would say maybe to chip over it to hold the road until it can be a project and all those basins can be replaced there. They're starting to crumble. Different ones, we fixed a few of them, you know, by replacing the tops and stuff, but once you open it up, it's all of them kind of need to go in there before any kind of major project would be done. I would recommend going in there, replacing just the catch basins, not the play, the catch basins.
Is that the only place where you're seeing that kind of deterioration in catch bases?
Yeah, whole hill and tipper are showing a little bit too. We've, every once in a while there, but it seems more on the Laurel Drive side.
I know that you've been going through there very methodically every year, going a few out.
Oh, right. And that's, you know, and that, I mean, we could never, as a town crew, could not go in there. We'd spend all summer without doing anything, you know, manpower staff wise to go in there. We replace some, if one collapses or it needs dire repair, we're going in there, putting a structure and doing it the right way. So that basin is all set. So we might be able to skip a few, but that is a project before any major paving gets done in that area.
Mike, any questions on Chip Seal so far?
No, no, thank you.
Crack seal, just, and this one goes along a little bit. This is just kind of a rough thing. Glass Factory, Old Farms, Clint Eldridge. Clint Eldridge would be done before anything was done there. So if they were to do any overlay or any chipping, they would be done. Lustig and Miller Farms would be done for cracks. And there might be a few here and there as we, as we go along to see, to shift if we're going to chip seal depending on money, that's what we do. Usually you crack seal before you chip.
I was wondering why that was on there. Multiple, yeah. I could see.
And any of the overlays that we would do like Fisher Hills, that would be crack sealed too, depending on, this is all depending on the funding wise. But, you know, whatever we're going to over, to seal up the cracks and then an overlay will be done.
All right. So I'm gonna say to you, this is a lot, knowing what we just spent on Moose Meadow Road and knowing this chip seal list is about.
About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Depending on price wise, depending if it goes up or goes down.
And that you're starting to work on this. Do you think we could do all of this with the million dollars you proposed? Okay, so we have to start.
Cutting and moving things around.
You can see that it's not a long list. So we started talking about dollars. They're not going nearly as far as we'd like them to go. And then Troy, you noted and it's noted on this sheet for both of you, that as Troy works on Plan of the Out Years, work on Glass Factory and Adamic Road, they're both listed as needing minor rehab in Beta's report. They're just not on the current, they're not in the current year. But if the town were to vote for a new school, Troy would recommend us looking at adjusting the timelines for those areas and see what needs to be done. But you don't, you think.
Right now, no, I think.
You said to me, you think Glass Factory is in better shape than that.
And there's a few drainage, if it was to, if there was a school to be built there or whatnot. And even eventually the corner of Fish and Apple Tree, Glass Factory and Adamic, there's a sinkhole that needs to be, use an investigation there. Then it's sinking every year that I've been there. Watched it last year, it's sinking. So probably this summer, we're going to go in there and cut it out and move that chunk and dig down to see, you know, it could be an old stump that's buried there or something that's rotten. There's a couple of cross curbs that need to be replaced and that's something that would be done no matter what, either the school that they're or in the future.
When you talk about the sinkhole, I might be familiar with that. That may be the corner of my, my yard. Would it mean having to cut out that bank? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's actually a problem from, if you were to go down Glass Factory and turn onto Adamic.
Going towards Hilltop.
Yep, right there, the corner right there where the stop sign is.
So in that intersection, okay. At the same time, I know you've talked multiple times about concerns with the, the bank on the opposite side.
The bank on the opposite side and on the follow, on the opposite side of that, there's a basin and unfortunately the water sits twenty feet from that. So that should be, you know, cut out or a basin be dropped or when you pave it, we can get the water to, maybe we can lower that basin and get the asphalt and they do what to pave to get the water to run into the basin correctly.
So you said you can't, the Public Works Department couldn't manage all these projects. You couldn't do all of these on this if you wanted to.
Oh, yeah. Do, right. They're all done by contractors. So if I had the.
We still gotta support the contractors, not you just don't let them.
Right. Well, that's, yeah. I mean, if they're gonna pave, if a contractor's gonna come in and pave and do it, you're not gonna have them because it costs money to mobilize and demobilize. So you're gonna bring them in. So when they come in, I would be like, hey, we're gonna do holster, colar, loose metal and pine crest. Say that's what we had the money for. They're gonna come and do all those roads. They'll go from one road to another to another. They'll put their grinding. They'll come in and grind it, grade it, then they'll pave, grind and grade as they keep going along to get it, to get it done. That's, that's how it would happen. The chip seal we want traffic for, but we can even hire traffic out where they even, they have, every contractor that we use has their own traffic control. We just do it to save, save the cost for it to do it, but it can be done.
So the crack seal and chip seal, those are, those are what we are typically budgeting for and would not have any problem being able to manage those projects. It's, it's looking for funding outside of that and that's at eight hundred thousand dollars. So let's say that this amount moves forward in this year chart. Can't tell you where it's gonna land, right? This is just one piece of the budget and we can't do it all. Where's your priority line? What do you want to see us do or need to see us accomplish this year?
I think the top four, I think holster road, colder, loose metal and pine crest. And then, you know, with the, that for your big paving projects, your overlays, Fisher Hill. And I would say Penny Hill would be a priority. It's a big traveled road. You know, the chip seal would stay the same.
Have you been able to assess any kind of cost to these yet?
No, not yet. I'd rather get somewhat of kind of a number before I go and, you know. Try to say, this is a people relative to our contractors to say, I think we can do these two roads. This is what I would like instead of trying to be, you know, here's this and that. It's a playground. So that's. I don't want to waste somebody's time, you know.
Troy. Troy, you were talking a little bit about traffic control and this is an issue that I think we should not dive into tonight since we're here about budget. But maybe for a future conversation, I've noticed a lot of sort of questioning around town when the crack seal contractor is working because they don't identify their vehicles or their personnel very well. And maybe we can sort of, if we have a standard, we can work to kind of enforce it with the contractors or establish the standard that when these contractors are working around town, if they're doing their own traffic control, that we mean a certain criteria and that they have to label their vehicles and things like that. It might be beneficial to the sort of, you know, the safety of the traffic as well as the townspeople seeing kind of beat up old vehicles with no labels.
If, no, that's a good point, Mike. Absolutely.
Thanks. I know it's not for tonight.
So you do have without, you don't have salaries or we're missing some of the fuel indicators in Troy's budget, but you have kind of an overall picture of what a million dollars does to Troy's budget. If everything else stays the same, we're looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar increase, right? He's asking for some slight increases in some other areas. Do we think that's something we want to support and try to move forward? How do either of you see us moving in some direction? I think what I got the most, what struck me the most in the discussion from Beta is exactly what Troy's been saying to me repeatedly for the last four years. If we don't start putting some money into our roads, we're going to move backwards. If we don't keep our good roads good and fix our bad roads, we're going to be in rough shape. And I think we see that for some of our roads. So whether or not we think realistically we can support this kind of increase, I think we need to put in an increase and we need to identify at least a major project to move towards. We're always looking for whatever grant funds we can, but at some point we're going to have to assume the responsibility of making progress with some of these roads. And to the point earlier, Jim, I think you and I were discussing, some of these are our lesser travel roads. And the years of pushing them off Penny Hill aside, that's obviously heavily traveled. It is causing an issue with them now. So we need to start to make some progress on that. And I just don't want to see us repeatedly in the situation we were in in Moose Meadow Road where we had no choice but to make some before we lost the road. So.
Erica.
That's Mike.
So in the line that is called total public work, the increase is showing as less than what you were talking about. That's because we're missing some numbers still, right?
Right. We're missing salary figures.
Yep.
And fuel figures in there, in the, any lease payments that would need to come.
Okay. So to your previous question, the, the previous comment you made as far as like, you know, what do we feel we can support? To be honest, you know, I'm, I'm working on shifting my hat from Board of Finance to Board of Selectmen and the, my feeling is that we, every, every department should present a responsible request. But if this is what we feel is responsible for taking care of our infrastructure, then I think that's what we should present, obviously, when we see the final numbers. But I think we should also obviously be aware, what we all know is that the Board of Finance's mission is then to figure out how to be responsible with the entire package. You know, so we ask for an increase, we justify that increase, we believe in it, whatever we agree is the final number, and then we have to see what the result is. But I don't feel like there's anything unreasonable in this. It's just a big jump.
Agreed. Yeah. And I agree. And seeing one online and one Board of Finance member in the room, you know, they're, they're already starting to pay attention. And I recognize that I know we need to do a million dollars in roads this year. I just don't know that we can. And I don't know that we, you know, looking at the bigger picture, right? When we see all of the town's budgets, that we wouldn't understand why we can't make a large jump in one year. Maybe we had to retrain ourselves into how we get from here to there. But this is, Mike, some of what you've been hearing from the other side of the table for the last couple of years and me nonstop justifying some of the larger increases we brought to you because from the, from the infrastructure side, it's really, it's what we need to do and need to put some more money in, into. And at that, you know, I think I've mentioned to you all before, we're working on getting some grant work to, to do some other roads that will take them off of these lists, specifically Village Hill and Schofield Road, include the drainage and some paving and get those off of this, a different taxpayer shift, but off of the direct Wellington taxes. So Jim, your thoughts?
I always figured that you'd have to put some effort into road maintenance. And I, and I figured it would probably be, be something like this, some March number of a couple hundred. I seem to recall in the four or five hundred thousand is in some years prior to that. And even that wouldn't, based on the analysis, probably wouldn't be, would keep us declining.
Right.
I mean, it looks, it looks like at best just to keep us neutral by, by the analysis consultants provided. I mean, you have to spend at least eight hundred dollars. Now, I think I agree with, with Mike. You got a big chunk. Okay. But when you could take that big chunk all at once, I don't know. It, it, that might be, it sounds like a real great CIP thing, right? You've got, you've got to put that whole thing in there and you go, well, yep, we're, we need a bond now and, you know, and that might be the best way to pay for that. I don't know. So we're only seeing a little window, a little piece of it all.
Yeah. And, you know, when we see a big increase, this is no doubt going to, you know, take our dollar amount and our percentage increase. If we spent nothing additional in the rest of the budget, we're able to keep things flat, which I don't think we're going to be able to. And we increase this, we're looking at about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. Right? So that's, that's. And we increase this, we're looking at about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase, right, so that's, that's a significant increase. But if it's, if it's what we believe, I, I think what's important to note is, in the, some of the cost. Analysis that they gave us. In just asphalt, curb to curb improvements, no drainage work, no basins. No utilities, no sidewalks, just product on the road. They're estimating our need somewhere just shy of thirteen million dollars. Just asphalt, and you're, we're already hearing Troy say, look, we need to do some work on Laurel, but just so you know, it needs some. It needs some drainage work, we need to replace basins all over town, so.
To, every road we touch.
That's right, and that's today, based on the standards, right, every year we don't. In their opinion, this is just one tool, but it, it aligns with our public works directors. Discussions of roads over the last few years, that if we don't start to make some progress, so I would, I would much rather move forward with. A solid plan with dollars that can support it, so Troy's saying, these are the four that I think we need to do. These are the two overlays, our chip seal, our crack seal, some solid estimates on those projects, and maybe we'll adjust this number. Maybe we'll adjust it down a little bit. Take a breath and say it's possible, it could adjust it, it could increase the number, but if we move forward with asking Troy to reach out to vendors and getting. A solid estimate on the work in those, on those four roads and present that as our plan. And move that forward, then we'll know where we're starting from. If, if we don't make it through Board of Finance getting everything we want, we know about how much each of these roads is going to cost us. And Troy can recommend to us what direction we go and, you know, what roads we fix out of that. So if we kind of scale back a little bit. Does that sound like a plan to move forward with?
Yeah, I think that's a fair path forward, obviously. Me saying I really, I'm, I'm behind this number really has to come once we see the rest of the number. But I think this is the general direction, that's the right direction, I just know what we all know, and that's a big chunk of money to dump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over two mills, right, so.
Yeah, it's significant. And that's why I say, you know, we hear Troy say, I know vendors are hesitant to come out and give you quotes and do all this work when they don't. There's nothing i- in the end to guarantee them work, and, and they have an abundance of work right now, so. If we can narrow down our scope, say this is what we're committed to moving forward with and defending, then we at least have. A, a place to start when we have to, if we have to, I'm gonna say if, that when, we have to make some adjustments. And, and some changes, and then, you know, Troy, I know. We talk often about some of your concerns with the dirt section of these roads that you would like to see on this plan. But when I asked you which of these were more important, the, the paved roads, fault of the top, so it's possible, maybe we could. You know, get one of those done if there's support here within that budget, but at this point, I think it's important that we start. Maintaining some of the, the pavement that we do have down before we start adding new pavement to be able to. Show that we can support it. So. With that, it is, it's very difficult to have a solid discussion. Some of these numbers ineffective, because they're just, they're just numbers and not part of the whole picture, and there are so many missing pieces right now. As we get the budget put together, I'll, we'll share some of the information with you so that you can take a look at it. But thi- this is going to be, I think, part of our, our biggest discussion so far. I've seen almost every department has Donna's working to put them together, this is where we're gonna see the biggest increase. The others are gonna be minimal increases and, and a couple of savings here and there, but how we can work to justify an eight hundred thousand dollars.
Troy, is there anything from this survey we just got here that. Data here that can be passed along?
Yeah.
To the vendors, they, they, oh, yeah, we, because I know they were, they were taking length of the road, width of the road.
Right, so there, we could add, you know, there's art, you know, it was done. Right, exactly, doing that, and then, on the, once you get the booklet part of it, they wrote it all down. Or segments of the road, you know, so I'll use Moose Meadow as an example, there was portions of it that were still okay, so. There was, you know, grind in the map right here, you know, there it shows. So, like right here, there's no maintenance, this blue line, routine maintenance, major rehab. So the red is all major, but this is part of this road still, so then it comes into minority, so this is major, meaning they're gonna grind all this. They could skip this, maybe do the overlay or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In that piece, so it's not, you know, there's different savings wise on.
But the data should be. Know exactly.
You know, and so we should be able to get a decent quote.
Decent quote, exactly, right, and we know, I mean, so, they've laid it all out, and so if he says, well, you know, it's this many square yards. They're way off, and there's a difference that, you know, we have here and we have their numbers, so.
I think, I think the decision would be easier to make if we solve it.
Yeah, and that's what's on there, right, exactly, if, my thing is, I just didn't wanna go get a call from some, a contractor and then. You know, he quotes out all, it takes time and, you know, to do this, which they need to do that, but it's, I wanna realistically to be. If we have this much number, now I know roughly what a mile road's gonna cost to grind and grade. So, you know, if I only have three hundred thousand, I can't have them go do, you know, check four miles a road because we don't have. So that's where it, it comes down to. You know, a dollar amount roughly, to be like, okay, now I know, because I'll have to switch gears. You know, just to say, I'm gonna get another hundred thousand, I'll just use that as, okay, maybe we won't be able to do a paving reclaim, but we might be able to do some overlay. Instead of the big project that way, and maybe we'll do a little less. Chip seal to maybe to get to a pa-, you know, there's little things we can do, so that's where you have to move it all of that.
And I hate to say this, Mike, do we call motion road being repaired back at us? And they build it up with a nice big gravel stone in the, in the sand and all that, and then at the very end, they just chip seal it all with. That wasn't too bad.
That wasn't too bad.
If you get into a bind, maybe there's.
There's things, there's other.
I mean, because I'm looking at Kuzco Road and go like, that looks like a pretty nice gravel.
Gra- gravel road, exactly, but there's, gravel roads do take a lot of maintenance to do, you know, with putting process down in the potholes. Especially this year, it's freezing one minute and then it's raining the next, and it's, we're having. Around our fair share of problems with the dirt roads this year compared to the last few years.
Troy, while we're talking about roads and budgeting, you know that there's. An ongoing conversation with the school building committee and a proposed site for a, a potential new school. What we're hearing from the public as we take this presentation on the road and people come in and ask, lots of folks have questions. And there's an assumption that we need to completely redo Adamant and Glass Factory. And that they're not wide enough, that they need issues, can you talk to us about what your concerns are with those roads? So, I think it's important for us to be having that discussion down the road, because while it's not. Part of the building project, it is part of our infrastructure, and it would need some more traffic on those roads.
Right, so, I mean, this is, you know, my thing, I'm not a surveyor, I'm not a engineer to, you know, to, or an architect or whatnot. Um, there is a couple of curves on that road, it was your first come off of. Seventy-four, yep, sorry, um, there is a little bit of a bank in there, I would probably maybe suggest some, you know, guardrails in there. Um, down at the corner where we do, you know, I think down at the bottom, you know, obviously buses go up that road now, so I can't say we need, it needs major. You know, put a three lane highway there, I don't believe that's, you know, it's a backcountry road. It's still efficient, we go down it with our vehicles, we have it, there could be some more, some tree removals, some sideline issues, a little bit coming out onto. On the back of the thirty-two, then you have to get the state involved. Catch basin wise, you know, their drainage, there isn't really any drainage on Glass Factory besides a couple of cross curbs. Depends where the school's gonna put the water, if the school, the site always gonna stay on, the water's gonna stay on the site, most likely it is, I didn't see plans for that. But, major, like, major widening and stuff like that, I don't, maybe a few spots, but I don't think the whole road needs to. Do a whole huge rehab where it's gonna be, you know, ten more feet on either side and sidewalks, I don't believe that it's happening.
Because I, I looked at the data from Beta where they gave us, they just give us average width, and the average width of Glass Factory. Was the same average width as Old Farm Troy, so certainly. Everyone's coming down, who's going to center, we're adding a little bit more, if we were to combine schools, we're talking about more. But do you see us, I mean, would you say to us, you need to look at, you know, complete reclaim of that road immediately?
No, absolutely not, anything that would be done, to me, would be done after the construction phase, when the construction is done before the school would.
Mike, was that you?
Yeah, I was shifting in my, in my chair here, sorry.
Before then, that would be, you know, because you wouldn't wanna fix something now, the road is still in decent shape enough that it would probably hold up to the traffic. You know, with what it is, but, you know, I wouldn't do any major improvements until something happens, when all the equipment's out of there and stuff like that. There's quite a bit of site work on our school machines and trucks.
And, and it is listed as needing some minor rehab in areas, but not now that you think that would hold. Several years, okay, so, I think that's an important conversation for us to continue to have as we look towards that building project. Because it may become, you know, if it becomes a reality, we have to look at. When, in a, in a plan, but you're saying not till after any construction is done.
I mean, they work in that building school for ten years, and obviously something would have to be done to that road now, or, or like, in the meantime. To hold that road so it's good, and I can't say, don't do any work to it, it's not, but there is, there's some stuff that would be done, I mean, you're preventative maintenance. And even if you did an overlay over just a, you know, rejuvenator, another chip seal.
I will, I will say on the list of roads that need maintenance, minor maintenance, Glass Factory, I don't see. You're not, but I don't see Adamant Road on that list, but it's on the same list and the same scope of work with about. Thirty total roads, so, sorry. Any questions about that, Mike?
I had unmuted, no, I'm following, thank you.
Okay. So, um, we can look at other aspects of public works, tonight there's other things you all wanna talk about. And, and then we are supposed to have another budget workshop next Tuesday, prior to our regular meeting. But without a, a better picture of the budget, we could pick another department to look at, I can't. We will do, I will do my best to, to make sure that all of those numbers in there are accurate, but I'm just not sure they will be. So, do we want to have another discussion next Monday as planned, or do we wanna hold off until the twenty-third, when we will have a full, complete budget to be looking at?
I would like to hold off on the twenty-third for the public works section, right?
I, that will be everything, the entire budget will be ready for us on the twenty-third, we will have a whole picture of the selectmen's budget, right now. Every department missing, and I, I find it challenging, I find it incredibly challenging to look at. Well, this is what it would be, but I could put in some estimates of costs, but we're not really looking at where we're starting to see where we wanna go. And so I would rather look at a whole budget picture and have a one solid, meaningful discussion.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mike, are you in line with that?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Um, I'm gonna get it to you as soon as I can, I can tell you right now, Donna has promised it to me on the morning of the twenty-third. So, anything before will be a bonus, but as soon as I have it, we will get it out to you so you can start to take a look at it.
Okay.
All right, and in the meantime, we'll. We'll send Troy off with some action items as far as looking at a cost estimate for the specific plan. The first four paved roads to shim and overlays, a chip seal plan, crack seal. Plan as he presented to us, and then move forward from there, one last thing we should. Start to think, you can both start to think about as we move into the budget discussion, will be, so contractors, so we have a two-year. File contract, it will be up this year, so we'll be putting that out to bid, currently we only have one vendor. Over the past, I'll speak to my five years we've had, we've asked for two, we've only had one. And so.
Erica, what's the timing on that, when does that actually go out to bid, is it over the summer, or?
Oh, no, it goes out before.
We just looked at it.
Yeah, so it'll go out in April and then it will be ready before July.
It's before July, so we, you know, we, we use, we, we estimate, we've only been using one contractor, so.
Right.
We go out, we'll go out to bid again for one, whether our current contractor will bid it or not remains to be seen. He's indicative that he might, but it's, you know, they're sealed bids, so. You.
Does it?
Go ahead.
Is there any, is there any logic to attempting to get two again to relieve some pressure on our crew? And see if we get them?
We could, we could certainly put it back out as two, every time it's been out, it's two, so yeah, I don't see.
I'm just wondering if, yeah, if there's some miracle that it comes through, maybe that relieves a little pressure on our crew.
No, I agree. Okay, so just keep thinking about that as, you know, a, a, a discussion point, because if we get none. We will really have to pivot to figure out what we're going to do.
That's not the direction I was thinking.
Right, I, well, I like to, you know, plan for, for.
Of course.
The worst and hope for the best, because we, if we don't have, we have a spare truck. Uh, but we don't have another driver currently, so that's something to think about, but, you know, Troy, I, I'm sure. We'll be hearing discussions about staffing too, because, well.
Well, if we don't get. If we don't get any contractors, we're putting a plow on that Tahoe.
Yeah, now, now we'll just put them in the spare, so, all right. Any other discussions, if you have any. Comments or questions regarding the paving, send them through to Kelsey, we'll make sure that they get included. We'll hang on to this so we can fill it up for you, we're gonna give you a budget book, Mike, it will be here, ready for your. When we have our budget, and that will be any backup that comes from any department, so you can have everything available to you. So with no other business before, oh, Jimmy, you have something?
Yeah, I'm happy if you can email any of this to me, that would be great.
All right, with any other business before us, I will move to adjourn at six seventeen.
Second.
Second, it's a non-debatable matter, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
We'll see you shortly, and I have a few minutes before our.